Good evening. This is the Buena Park City Council Emergency Meeting Tuesday, March 17th, 2020 at 4:00 PM. We had noticed earlier on a different topic, we had changed this now to a special notice regarding the virus nineteen. Madam Clerk, would you please read our special reading of the coronavirus, please?
Of course. This is a special notice regarding COVID-19. On March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency in California as a result of COVID-19 and issued executive order N-25-20, which allows council members to attend city council meetings telephonically. Please be advised that some or all of the city Buena Park council members and staff may attend this meeting telephonically. Given the health risks associated with COVID-19, the city is encouraging members of the public to submit their comments and questions in writing for city council consideration by sending those comments and questions to thecityclerk@cityclerk@buena park dot com. All comments and questions will be read during the meeting. If you wish to attend the city council meeting in person, the city's main conference room will be open and available for the public to observe and offer public comment. We ask that members of the public in attendance use social distancing practices. All meetings of the city council are available on the city's website at www.buena park dot com and the city's cable channel BPTV Channel 399. Please contact the city clerk's office at 714-562-3750 for any questions.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Park?
Here.
Councilmember Swift?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trout?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. This is oral communication on emergency items only. This is the portion of the meeting set aside to individual public comments regarding any item on the emergency meeting agenda only. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes each. Those wishing to speak are asked to complete a speaker's identification form located at the council chamber entrance and place it in the box near the speaker's lectern, but I believe those little directions should be changed at the bottom?
That is correct. Those should have been edited, but we do have the main council room open. And Lucy, are there any public wishing to speak?
I do not have requests.
Can you repeat that, please?
We do not have any requests to speak.
Okay, thank you.
I understand there is nobody wishing to speak at this time. So I'm gonna close oral communications. We're gonna do the new business items one and two. First is community update on the Corona nineteen and direction from the city council. We have a staff report by our city manager, Jim Vanderpool, Corey Sinis, the chief of police, and Lance Carmen, the emergency service commander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and the public. Staff is finding it important to have this emergency meeting to not only brief the mayor and the city council, but also the community as a whole. This situation has certainly been rapidly changing, and I can assure you that we are certainly on top of it here at the city. Your staff has been meeting frequently. We've been engaged with the County of Orange on daily EOC calls, and we'll get into a little more of the weeds about what is actually happening here at the city from some of the subject matter experts that, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned as part of this presentation. But I just wanted to note that thus far, administration has been reacting to the pandemic on the advice of federal, state, and county authority. So I recognize that a number of Orange County cities have been taking different steps. We've been relying specifically on the experts of federal, state, and local authorities on how we should respond and react here in the city of Buena Park. All of the guidelines set forth thus far by those agencies have been implemented. All the things that we're familiar with, things like social distancing, no gatherings of ten or more, if you're elderly or if you have underlying health conditions, all of those things have been implemented, and we've been very sensitive to implement those here at the city to protect also the public, but also our employees. You know, certainly inasmuch as it makes a whole lot of sense for large gatherings to be canceled, and Mr. Jim Boxer, Community Services Director, will talk about some of the things canceled here at the city, but certainly, you know, large sporting events, theaters, gyms, nightclubs, bars, Knott's Berry Farm, certainly important to close all of those for the public benefit. But one of the things that your administration felt strongly about is that this government at the city level should be available to its residents for as long as possible while maintaining those safeguards that are being recommended by those federal, state, and county agencies. However, it appears that things are changing, and probably more rapidly than ever. Today at 2:20, well, let me go back a step. This morning at 9:30, the Orange County Board of Supervisors conducted an emergency meeting of their own where they heard from a number of Orange County health experts, and taking their advice, they issued a notice that we just received at 2:20 this afternoon from the Orange County Health Officer. It was regarding all public and private gatherings of any size. That order, along with other state statutes, require that essential services continue to be maintained, and that is our message to the Buena Park community. When you read this warning, and again, I'll talk to some of the specifics about it in a moment, when you read that warning, rest assured that we are responding to all necessary functions here in the city of Buena Park. We are working right now, recognizing that this emergency meeting was called by the mayor this morning. We just got these, this director from the county at 2:20. We are still in the process of reconciling those orders with the city's continuity plan. So what we do on a regular basis outside of emergencies such as these, we plan for emergencies. We have an emergency operation manager who will talk to you all in the community about what we do year in and year out to make sure that when these things happen, we are safe. And so with that, I'm going to ask certain folks to come up and give you more information from their area of expertise. Unless there's any questions, I'm gonna turn this over to some of those folks at this time.
I just wanna make one little statement. Congressman Gil Seneros called me personally to ask what the city needed, what kind of help we needed. So I told him that we'd give him a full report tonight. Actually, I used Aaron France's name that he'd be contacting him personally, and so I thought that was great of them reaching out to all the mayors here in his district.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with that, I'd like to ask Orange County Fire Authority Division Chief James Henry to come up and give us a report from the fire authority and what's happening there.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I guess I just wanted to start off by saying that all of your fire stations are fully staffed and operational. The fire authority is taking some measures to limit public access to all non-emergent type activities. So we're not doing public demos. Obviously, there's no school visitations with the schools being closed and all of those kind of things. Our dispatch center is also doing additional screening to alert our personnel and local law enforcement that respond with us to on medical emergencies, to identify any patients that may have traveled out of the country or if a possible exposure. Again, I talked about the public access as being closed. Right now, I can tell you that all of the firefighters in our agency, none of them have tested positive for the virus, and we're continuing to take measures to ensure that we're operationally ready. Some things that we've done internally is we've stood up an incident management team to deal with this, and just like the city manager spoke, we're in contact with the county board of supervisors as well as the Emergency Operations Center to ensure that we're meeting all the standards, as well as working collectively and following Orange County Healthcare Association's guidelines, as well as the Center for Disease Control. So at this time, I'll take any questions if you have.
Any questions? Councilman Brown?
As I was walking in here, I just saw on Channel 5 News, there was a demonstration by OCFA with Channel 5 on the gownings with face mask and the shield, and how they were approaching victims now.
Yes, sir.
So that was very interesting to see how they were doing that.
Yes, sir. So we have a PPE, you know, personal protective equipment that we have issued. Some of the things that we're doing, like I said, was the advanced screening and then also minimizing our contact. We send one of our people in initially gowned up in that PPE, that personal protective equipment, and then the other team is standing by to don it as well if we need additional resources. Some of the other things we're trying to do as well is, as you know, try to pre-screen as much as possible to, you know, give our people a heads up of what potentially could they counter out there. So. Any questions, sir?
Any other questions from council?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And then Police Chief Sinis, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, you know, as the fire chief kind of expressed, you know, our first concern and our number one priority is keeping our employees safe, the safety of our employees, and the safety of the people that we serve here in the community. We have taken a number of steps as well, leading up to today, and as the city manager kind of pointed out, it just changed an hour ago. And so we're currently reevaluating what we're doing and maybe doing more as of tomorrow. But some of the things that we are doing, you know, we're working with the OCFA because we do respond to a number of medical aid calls because our officers are out in the field. We tend to get to medical aid calls quicker than the OCFA. We are having our dispatchers stay online with the reporting parties on medical aid calls until the end of the call when we, so when we get a medical aid call, we hand it over to the Orange County Fire Authority dispatcher. A lot of times in the past, what we've done is just hand it over. If they need us, they'll call us and say we need PD on scene. What we're changing now is we are asking questions, some medical questions prior to handing that call over to the fire authority dispatchers, and on top of that, our dispatchers are staying online with the fire dispatcher to determine whether or not there's, if the patient has any medical conditions, a fever, any flu-like symptoms, you know, heart issues or stuff like that, to determine whether or not we need to respond. If it's not a life-threatening medical aid, we're gonna leave that up to the Orange County Fire Authority to respond. If it is something we do respond to, PPEs, our personal protection gear that our officers have with them, will be deployed with our officers when they go inside these residences. A few other things we're doing is if it's not a life or death situation, an emergency-type call, and it's just a non-emergency call, we're limiting the risk of our officers going inside of residences, and we're asking the reporting party to step outside of the residence and contact our officers. In addition to that, on non-emergency calls, we're having our reporting parties call in reports versus sending officers out to the scene to take reports. We're asking them to call over the phone. We have people standing by at the police station that can take that report over the phone versus putting our officers at risk when it comes to personal contact with individuals. But I can assure the community that public safety will not be impacted. We're currently looking at our deployment strategies as things start to become more fluid and as the Department of Health is putting more restrictions on members of our community. We're looking at deployment strategies to make sure we have a sufficient number of officers out there in the field. As people are asked to maybe shelter in place and businesses are closing, I'm sure business owners are concerned that their businesses will be empty. We'll do the best we can to patrol those businesses to ensure that there's no crime occurring at those businesses. So we're making sure that we have enough officers high visibility in our communities so that people feel safe and they're not concerned with public safety. I'm happy to answer any questions, but as the city manager says, this is a fluid situation that's constantly changing. We're doing our best to adapt to those changes.
I would like to ask, this is a very stressful time right now, and I've been getting quite a few emails, people trying to get home, places to park, everybody's being told they have to stay at home, and they've been getting tickets for on street sweeping day. Are we gonna make an adjustment in that?
We are.
Do we need to go to the city council with that or what? Because it even makes it more stressful on a family when they have to keep moving their car at real early times, and it's just something I think we need to look at.
We are, Mayor, and we're concerned and compassionate with that understanding that people are now gonna be home. So we are not going to be writing sweeper tickets for the next couple of weeks, and we'll evaluate that as we move forward. But we will not be enforcing this, no parking for our street sweepers.
I mean, they do have to follow the rules, whether it's red or whatever, but but street sweeping, we're not gonna be writing tickets.
That's correct.
That's gonna take a lot of pressure off a lot of people. Thank you. Any other question? Mayor Pro Tem Trout, please.
Since you mentioned not writing the tickets, on tickets that have been written since, let's see, last Monday, that would have been March 9th, are we able to, or has the department made a decision on not requiring payment on those tickets already issued within a recent amount of time? And if not, that's something I would like to see this council make a decision on tonight.
We have not even discussed that, but we'd be happy to do that. Obviously, the ticket has been written, so it really boils down to whether or not we're willing to waive those fees. And I guess that would be a policy decision.
And for questions that I've received from both school district personnel as well as employees working at grocery stores is about police visibility there, because food distribution locations, grocery stores, they've been high-volume areas. Could you tell us a little bit more about the patrol of those certain locations?
Sure. We've been monitoring those. We've really had no issues yet, but those will be locations that we will continue to have high visibility at.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite up our EOC coordinator, Lance Charms, to give us an update from the EOC, please.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we meet again. As of 2 o'clock this afternoon, the city manager activated the City Emergency Operations Center at Level 3, which is the lowest level of activation. Essentially, we have assigned section chiefs, an EOC director, and a couple of other positions. What this does is it addresses some issues that were coming up from the OA. The overall event objectives for the EOC, the reason that it's open, will be to monitor progress of the pandemic, monitor OA protective actions and responses, coordinate city protective and response actions, coordinate city procurements and expenditures related to COVID-19 response, and relay unmet resource needs to the OA EOC for resolution. That last one, knowing that that's about to happen, is one of the prime reasons that we had to turn on our EOC, because in order to send things to the operational area EOC, we have to be up to. We don't expect that people will be at the EOC full-time. It'll only be for particular meetings having to do with emergency response and also monitoring the operational area conference call, which happens every day. That said, I believe we'll be getting to the emergency proclamation next. Is that correct? Okay. So that's the biggest thing that's happened so far. Continue to monitor situation. We get progress or situation reports from the state and from the county every day. I go through those. We're up to 22 confirmed cases in Orange County, and there is confirmed community transmission at this point. So we've reached a corner that we now turn that it's self-sustaining, and we'll have to deal with that going forward. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
No.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, you know, this is a bit unorthodox, having these council meetings without the public in the chamber with us. Inasmuch as there are provisions for the public to engage in these types of meetings, I was gonna ask the city clerk if she can go over some of the Brown Act issues that the governor has made a proclamation on so the public is aware of kind of these new protocols and why they're in place.
Right. I had a discussion with our city clerk this morning, being that we had called a special meeting, and then we decided to put that on hold to bring this meeting forward instead because of emergency. And this is kind of a new thing for everyone here, and so I think that's a great idea, and we'll have our city clerk give us a little report and some of the things that we're gonna do and maybe some suggestions. Madam Clerk.
Okay, so just some of the things that we've already done in the city. So all of our commission meetings have been canceled, except for the planning commission. The planning commission meetings will be held as scheduled and needed, which will be determined by the Community Development Department. Buena Park will continue to conduct our city council meetings as scheduled. All agendas are gonna be comprised of only essential items, such as paying bills and awarding contracts. All of our presentations, so anything where the public is invited to attend, employee recognitions, and our study session items are gonna be postponed until all of the health recommendations are lifted. We just thought that it would be better to have less public here, being closer to each other, but they will still be scheduled just at a later date. Council members and our staff who wish to attend council meetings can do so telephonically. So in the governor's order, it allows council members and staff to participate without having to post an agenda at the telephone location, the remote location, and so we have a council member today who is participating in that manner.
Can you please ask her to voice in, please, to make sure she's there?
Hi, Beth, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here. I'm listening. I'm watching you on my computer, and I'm listening.
Do you have any questions, Beth?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay. The city is actually urging any members of the public to view council meetings live via the city's website at www.buena park dot com or the city's cable channel BPTV 399. You can also feel free to send me questions or comments. I'll make sure that the city council receives those comments and actually read those for the public and the council's information. You can send them to cityclerk@buena park dot com. The main conference room, however, is still open for the public to physically be here and participate if they wish. The meeting will be shown live on the TV in the main conference room with the conference call into our meeting, so as we did earlier today. If there are any questions from the public, you can feel free to contact the city clerk's office at 714-562-3750. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for any of the speakers so far from council?
Just...
Park, please.
Thank you. You know, before this meeting, I checked a few business establishments within the city. It didn't look good. I'm very worried about the impact on the local economy, and so this is a request to the city manager's office. When federal, state, and other government agencies create an economic stimulus package that can be adopted by us on a local level, would you please make it available via, you know, city website or Facebook so that we can assist the local businesses? Okay?
And to your point, council member, that's really one of the reasons why I think staff and administration have been so cautious to not react beyond what the federal government, the state government, and the county officials were recommending out of sensitivity to those folks that might be displaced, out of a job, not getting a paycheck. But again, being sensitive to the safety concerns and recommendations of those agencies, but again, recognizing to your point that there's gonna be hurting from people that, you know, operate small businesses, or they work in small businesses, or they're hourly and they won't get paid.
Thank you.
I went onto our website, which is very easy to follow. It's got a lot of nice pictures and stuff, so you know you're looking at the coronavirus there and some different items there and handy tips. So go on our website. I guess you just actually just type in buena park dot com, and it pops up right there, and our format is great. Just move down the page until you find information for the city council, and it's got all the information. And I believe Gina's doing that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Gina's doing it. And what a great, it's got all the great pictures where it grabs your eyes, and you won't get lost, I'm sure. You'll find what you're looking for there. And you can also, do we have any special numbers that they can call in case of emergency or anything, or basically look at the website, or what would you like to...
Well, I think for emergencies, they would, you know, call 911, but I think for just information about the situation, they could call the city manager's office.
Okay. I mean, everything we know, I mean, they're gonna bombard us if it gets too bad, and if they go to our website, it explains everything. We have a lot of telephone numbers I noticed there that they can call. Oh, here we go. We're gonna get some answers here.
If people have health-related questions, they can call the OCHCA's Health Referral Line. The number is on the COVID-19 page on the website right up at the top, and that is available 24 hours, day, seven days a week. So they'd be able to get the health-related information and also any referrals to any services that they would need that are health-related.
Thank you very much. Yeah, because I looked through it, and I'd say it was pretty easy to follow, but I mean, when people start looking for something, you know, they wanna start calling or get ahold, I mean, that is your best, it's like a telephone book. I mean, it's got all the information, and as we get more information, I think we'll be putting that on there too, adding it to it. So everything we find out is gonna make, we're gonna put on there, make it available to all of our citizens here in the city of Buena Park.
And I really recommend that our residents follow us on our social media, because so much information is posted up there as we get it, and so it's probably the quickest way. Certainly, we'll put it on our website, but if they want, you know, up to the minute as we know it, that's the place to get it.
Yes, well, Congressman Gil Seneros, he called, when he called, he asked anything they can do, their office can do. Of course, we're gonna be working with him as much as possible, and all of our other elected officials to make our citizens as safe as possible. So any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, we have one more speaker.
Okay.
Mr. Jim Boxer, Community Services Director. We'll kind of update the community on some of our facility closures, our program closures, our special event cancellations, and if you have, you know, reservations at one of our facilities, how that will all go down.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the council, the Community Services Department. In response to the COVID-19 virus, the following is currently being implemented in the department. The Buena Park Senior Center is now closed. The daily congregate meal program will be starting this Thursday, March 19th, and will be delivering all senior meals on wheels, as well as those older adults who've participated in the daily lunch program will have the opportunity to do a drive-through at the senior center and get their meals. They're frozen meals, and those will be provided for them to take home that day. Adult daycare at the center has been suspended. The Parks and Recreation, the Cultural Arts, and the senior commissions, as city clerk stated, are all canceled. The department has also canceled or suspended the following. High school art show ceremony canceled, vault interview workshops canceled, pause in the park scheduled for this weekend canceled, the all-city track meet scheduled in two weeks, or I'm sorry, a week and a half, canceled, the spring extravaganza at Boys Ring canceled, adult softball programs suspended, the youth basketball awards ceremony this week suspended, the peanut baseball skills testing and league suspended, volleyball and basketball on all activities at the Buena Park Junior High School Gymnasium have also been suspended, parents' night out for the next two months suspended, Family Art Festival canceled. All contract classes have also been suspended as of yesterday. All hall and facility rentals at both the Ehlers Event Center as well as the Buena Park Community Center have been canceled. We have had a total of 29 rentals within the past week that has been canceled. After-school programming at Emory School as well as Whittaker School Park has been suspended as well. This concludes my report. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any questions from council? One, Mayor Pro Tem Trout.
Regarding to the senior center, the big concern, of course, was feeding the seniors, and you'd mentioned the drive-through program for the people who had been getting their meals already from that location. meals already from that location. Could you talk about any transportation being provided, if any? And could you also mention whether there are any other basic supplies that are being provided, like toilet paper?
Right. So there are no basic supplies being provided at the center. However, if there's a daily participant who was coming to the senior center who's unable to make it through the drive-through, we will have them as part of the Meals on Wheels delivery program and meals will be delivered to their house. The commodity food program will also still take place this coming Thursday through a drive-through capacity in the Eeler Event Center parking lot, back parking lot.
I understand that Meals on Wheels have been working with the city quite closely. So I just had a meeting with the president and she made the comment that they're going to be working with us a lot more. And of course, now the virus coming up, it's close by their facility. So it's going to be easy to basically ramp up and they said they were capable of ramping up. So.
Right. We've been in communication with Senior Meals on Services, Meals on Wheels, and we do have a program in place. So I feel very confident that our older adult population will be receiving their daily meals.
And, you know, all, everybody out there that's listening to us, watching this broadcast right now, if you've got neighbors and everything, you know, everybody, the people with any health problems or of age are supposed to stay indoors. So but please watch your neighbor. Make sure they're okay. Don't send the little kids over there. You do it personally, knock on the door and make sure they're okay, you know. I hope nobody gets offended or whatever, but we need to look out for our neighbors and that's very, very important. And if you have a problem, call the police department and they can do a welfare check if you already think something's bad. And we are in a state, basically a state of emergency with what's going on. Any other questions from council? No, thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, I've kind of been following the Facebook Live feed and so there were a couple of questions that popped up while we've been here meeting and I wanted to address some of those. There were some questions about enforcement of street sweeping, parking tickets. And so certainly for the time being, as the chief mentioned during his report, those will be suspended. So we want to make sure our residents are able, when they're home, to park on the streets safely and we will not be enforcing street sweeping tickets. That said, we do have environmental concerns to make sure that our streets get cleaned and maintained. So we would ask that the public, to the extent that they can, to let our sweepers go through and clean the area, but we will not be ticketed if there are, you know, situations that prevent that.
Or they can help clean up the mess that they've blocked from being clean is what you're trying to say.
The other question was, and this is more of a comment to the police chief, and this was upping neighborhood patrols and checking on elderly where possible. So certainly the chief is here and listening and so I will pass that on to our police chief. There was a question about are there any reported cases of coronavirus in the city of Buena Park? As I believe one of our speakers mentioned, maybe our EOC coordinator, there are 22 known in the county of Orange. The county has not reported any of those being in Buena Park at this time. So I'm not, we don't know. But as of right now, they're not indicating they are in Buena Park. And then finally, there was a question about the homeless and how this is affecting them. The city is still working diligently with their, we have a provider, a company called CityNet, and they're the case managers for our homeless population and work with them on matching them with resources and need. And so that will continue through this crisis and our homeless neighbors will continue to get out resources available through CityNet. So that will continue to happen without any kind of concerns. So.
Well, I was like to say is, you know, I hope everybody's practicing the good hygiene. Wash those hands. If you shake hands or should come in contact with any, make sure you use the sanitizer. It's always better to be safe than sorry. And we'll get through this. It's just going to be a little, little work, but we will get through this. So. And then the other question, we have one more. Connor Trout, our mayor pro tem.
Is this the moment you would want to start seeking questions on all items that haven't been discussed and seek feedback from council? Because I have an extensive list of items I'd like to see our city take action on. Is this that appropriate time?
I also have a commenting question.
Pardon, could you say it again?
This is Beth. I also have a comment and a question.
Okay. Swift, please. Councilwoman Swift.
Okay, this isn't not on what's been presented so far, but I've been asked about enacting a moratorium in our city on eviction due to people not being able to work, a lot of people. And so I wanted to ask the city attorney, is this in our purview? Is this something that we could even facilitate?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and Councilwoman Swift, the question goes to an executive order that Governor Newsom issued late yesterday. I did send the city council a memo late this afternoon on this, so it should be in your email if you didn't get it. But essentially, what the executive order does is it waives certain provisions of the government code that address the limitations and I can back up and simplify it. Cities are allowed to regulate rent control and conditions of eviction to a certain extent, but there is a state preemption to that. What the governor's executive order did is it waives that preemption. So cities now have the authority to enact a moratorium on residential and commercial evictions for tenants and foreclosures related to a loss of income or inability to pay rent relating to the COVID-19 outbreak. So directly answer your question, yes, the city may enact a moratorium on those activities.
A follow-up question. Because it doesn't specifically listed on our agenda, is this something that we could do today or would it have to come back another time?
So it is not listed on your agenda. The city council has the authority by two-thirds vote to add something to this agenda, something that came to the attention of staff in the council after the posting. So you could take action on this meeting. The issue is that you don't have the language of the interim ordinance in front of you. There is a sample that I've circulated internally to staff from the city of San Jose that they're going to be taking action, I believe, on today. So it's something that we could turn around in quick order. But I do not have that for you this afternoon. Council can certainly give direction on that and we can bring it back as quickly as that direction requires.
And finally, can, if we decide to do something like this, can it be retroactive to like say the first of month or the middle of the month?
I believe the executive order is prospective only through the end of March or May?
May 31st, 2020.
Thank you. May 31st, 2020. So I don't believe it would apply retroactively, but you could apply it really from the date of the executive order moving forward.
Which had been yesterday, correct?
Yesterday, correct.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to calendar that for our meeting next week.
We will have to go take a vote on that in order to do that. But can we wait until after Mr. Trout?
Next week, sir. Not, not today. The two-thirds vote is for today. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for next week.
That's okay. That's what I was trying to get make clear because Mr. Trout has some items too. So we'll make a decision after Mr. Trout makes his presentation.
No, sir. I ask for it to be calendared. Please typically calendar anything. I'm not asking for any special arrangements just for next.
Okay, yes, we'll calendar that. Yes, we will. We'll calendar that.
Thank you.
Mr. Trout.
May I get clarification? Maybe Councilmember Trout follow-up would go to this, but I think staff, if it's the council's direction, we can bring back that formal urgency ordinance for adoption as of the 24th. Is that what the request is?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
So can we, can we get consent, I mean, is that like consensus to do that? Like, you want us to do that?
We, we've got.
I was looking for the votes. It was more of a legal question as to whether or not we can just get that direction and bring it back for adoption.
Yes, we have that. Yep.
Great.
Due to, yeah.
And the recommended language I was going to start with, so without going into detail on it, but was.
Legal age, we'll let our attorney go into the legal age, please.
Was to prohibit residential evictions and foreclosures when the basis for eviction is non-payment of rent or foreclosure arising from a substantial decree in household or business income. And second, the decrease in income was caused by COVID-19 pandemic or any local, state or federal response thereto. And any limitation imposed by the city is to remain in place until at least May 31st, 2020.
Yes, Councilmember Trout, the intent would be to mirror the language in the executive order, which I believe you quoted.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. So the first item I want to discuss are utilities. So could the city manager talk about water disconnections and whether at this time we are continuing water disconnections or, and then also discuss extensions on deadlines for payments due? I know many cities are extending those. So could you touch on those two items?
Sure. So at this juncture, the staff recommendation would be to adhere to the new state guideline on disconnections, which allows residents, I believe, up to 82 days before disconnection for non-payment. That was what we were looking to do, but we can certainly make modifications based on council direction.
And then for deadlines for payments due, have we made any adjustments there? I know that other utilities like Edison and SoCal Gas have been extending those. One of the utilities until June 1st, meaning that there won't be, if you don't pay, the penalties increasing over time. So have we discussed, has staff discussed that item yet?
We haven't, but we can certainly implement that at council's pleasure.
That would be one that I would want to see council make a decision on for no water, no water disconnections whatsoever until at least June 1st and then an immediate extension on all deadlines for payment due until at least June 1st of this year. It's consistent with what other utilities are doing and what other cities are doing. So I think it just makes sense for the protection of our residents at this time. So on that item, in particular with utilities, I'm interested to see what the rest of my colleagues' thoughts are before I move on to other items.
Any questions on it or?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
As long as we're not trying to vote on this at this time, this is another thing that should be brought back at our next meeting.
Correct.
Correct. That's my intention. Yep.
Thank you.
So that's thumbs to bring back?
Thumbs to bring back for next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Basically, he's calendaring it.
Yes.
We're going to go a step further. We're actually going to prepare it for adoption at our next meeting.
Yes.
Whereas before we would have brought, we would have brought it to study session. We're going to implement it immediately.
Correct. Okay.
That's why the purpose is partially for this to be the study session.
Basically asking for, Swift?
Yes, I agree with that. But next time, not today.
Correct, correct. Correct, yes.
And then just to reaffirm for the street sweeping, that at the next meeting, we bring back canceling all tickets issued since March 9th. And also, could the chief, I guess, respond? Because we've seen a lot of concerns for what other types of tickets would there be out there that are non-critical purposes? Are there any others that you foresee that you think it would be helpful for council to know so that we can protect our residents at this time?
Well, the only ones we were going to not cite for were street sweeping tickets, tickets such as parking in handicap, parking in fire lanes, and those types of parking tickets we were still going to enforce.
Good, good. Okay, thank you. For our, and could the city manager discuss a little bit further about the ban on gatherings from the state or the, the state's guidelines regarding gatherings? Because I have pretty significant concerns regarding the fact that Pirates is still remaining opening, open and having gatherings of 250 people as of today. I think that's an embarrassment from our city. What did you just show?
Yes, I.
And Pirates has been posting on their, on their site saying they're staying open. So could you touch on a little bit more about our authority as a city and also what types of bans or guidelines are in place regarding entertainment venues, movie theaters, bars and gyms?
Right. So there's even more stringent guidelines that have come out from the Orange County Health Officer and that's the document that we are still kind of sifting through. But I will say that even prior to this Health Department order locally here at the county of Orange, there was a recommendation from both federal and state level for gatherings of, you know, 10 or more. So I mean, but this one is certainly much more stringent and I believe has enforcement authority from the county of Orange. And this would be all public and private gatherings regardless of size outside of a household.
And would we as a city, as a city council, need to act to have that enforcement authority? Or is that because that's coming from the county and there's been directive from executive orders at the state, we will already be going down that route? I just want to make sure that we do as much as we can to start to enforce this because I have serious concerns with what's continuing to remain open in our city.
From what's, from a very quick glance, it looks like county officials are looking to the cities for enforcement assistance. And so if that's the case, then if, you know, certainly the discussion here and the concerns of the council will be taken into consideration and we will act accordingly.
Do you need any particular council direction either today or on Tuesday then to do so?
Having clear.
Perfect.
I have direction.
And maybe I can pause here if it pleases the council. The next item on the agenda is a formal adoption of a local emergency. As staff has indicated, we've started the emergency operations plan. We're in level three, so that is ongoing. So this direction is certainly helpful, but the city manager, under the current climate, is going to have the authority to implement a lot of these things without coming back. Certainly, you know, adoption of ordinances, formal waiver of fees, things like that will come to you. But in real time, your city manager will have discretion to act as appropriate.
That's how it's written. So a lot of the things is basically already included in item two.
And for City Hall, could the city manager discuss our plan? Because this is something that keeps on changing. If and when we have plans to be closing City Hall, I know we heard already a lot of details about the police department on what they're, on the great work and changes that they're doing. But could you go into a little bit more information about city planning to close and what departments might be closed? Could you go into more detail there?
Well, first and foremost, police and fire will be open completely for operations. So I think it's important the public recognize that when we talk about city closures, that does not include police and fire. Furthermore, again, from very quick glance on the county health order, public agencies are required to continue performing essential functions. And so in fairness, and I was getting to this at the end of our meeting, but I'm glad you brought it up, Mayor Protem, it's going to be the staff recommendation to completely close City Hall just tomorrow, and that's to the public only. The employees will be here. Of course, those categorized as sensitive or, you know, other concerning matters would not report to work. But the balance would report as we put together a plan on how we will provide those essential services. And the city attorney can kind of talk a little more about, about, you know, our statutory requirements. But, you know, we want to be sensitive to things like building permits. So if, I'm getting into the weeds, but as an example for the public to understand, you know, if, if an elderly couple or a couple with a young family or what have you, their water heater goes out and they need to replace that water heater, it requires a building permit. And so I think that that would be an essential function for us to be available to make sure that that, that permit gets issued and the inspection gets completed for public safety. So that's one example of a million examples that, you know, we need to consider. But the thought is, Mr. Mayor Protem, that we gather tomorrow as a city, kind of, you know, the management team, we're going to meet tonight after this meeting, bring the employees here tomorrow to kind of put that plan in place and then we'll have a better answer for you, you know, sometime tomorrow.
And could the, could our HR director, Eddie Fenton, update the council on employees working remotely? I understand the VPN, VPN system and, but the last update I've received was Thursday night. So if you could tell me more about how we're going to be handling employers, employees working remotely?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The department head team will be evaluating, again, as the city manager Vanderpoel mentioned, what those essential functions are. And then we will be, again, seeing what we can utilize using our telecommunications equipment. So currently we have, say, 50 licensing agreements that we can operate the network under. If we need to make any type of additional purchases to increase that or. If we need to make any type of additional purchases to increase that, or 50 maybe enough, we're gonna be evaluating that tomorrow and of course through the next day. So again, our main purpose is to continue providing those essential functions to the public while maintaining, again, the safety, security of our employees and making sure that they're not unnecessarily or exposed to potential disease. Thank you.
One moment here. We just had an announcement over the news. I just got the break. Pirates will be closing today at 4 o'clock.
Thank you for that update.
And if I can add, you know, the, this is an order from the county health official, but it is penally enforceable. It's a misdemeanor and in some cases, a felony to willfully violate. And, you know, given the health and safety issues at stake, particularly if there's a willful transference of this illness. So this is a serious matter.
And if, this would either be for the city manager or for, yeah, I'll leave this question to the city manager, because we had mentioned homelessness and how we're working with CityNet. Because of course homeless people, we know, may have a more compromised immune system, so it's putting themselves and others at risk being on the streets. Could you talk about where people are being placed in housing and whether hotels especially, because now they're heavily unoccupied, are being used as locations of stay for these homeless individuals?
I don't have an answer to that right now, but maybe Chief Sinis, do you know of any plans in place at CityNet as this is enacting?
I do not right now, but we are still going to engage the homeless as we have and will continue to do. But alternate housing shelters or motels, as you speak of, because I'm sure some of our motels are not occupied as they probably normally are, will definitely be an option. But that's something we haven't spoken to them about yet.
Okay. If you could update council, just simply through an email, just letting us know, just confirming how homeless, how homeless people are being housed, maybe within the next day or two, that would be really helpful.
Definitely.
Thank you. And I think we've gotten through the majority of my main concerns to discuss at this time. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm sure things are gonna change from day to day or even from hour to hour. So I know and I have faith in our city staff and our county staff and our state, of course, that are gonna do all of the things that are best for our citizens. It's a very scary things going on out there. I don't know if we're overreacting or, you know, pay now or pay later. I guess it's better to be safe than sorry. So we're gonna do the best we can to take care of our citizens and be within the law. Any other questions? Swift, do you have anything else you'd like to add to the comments tonight?
No, I'm, I am finished asking my questions, but I appreciate being able to attend by using my telephone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. One more by Trout.
Just a question for the city manager, because you had already updated us on Facebook comments. Before we move on from this item, could you see if there's any additional comments you've seen on there from residents and so that way they can get answered? I just want to make sure we give the public every moment of opportunity for that input.
Sure. And you read my mind, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. There were a couple items on here that I wanted to bring up. And a lot of these are related to restaurant closures, takeouts, and what they're doing in LA, similar to what they're doing in Orange County. I would recommend and refer those questions to ocgov.com. They are putting the most up-to-date information available to the public regarding any kind of orders to close and operate. So if it's specific to orders on closure, that order would be coming from the county of Orange, and I would direct them to the county's website to get information. I'm trying to pull it up right now. It's just spinning and spinning. So I'm guessing that it's being a little overloaded right now with public requests for additional information, but be patient. And on that conference call we had today with the county EOC group, they committed to having the most recent information up very shortly. There was a question on here about, about water billing and cumulative. So in other words, will the, will the water consumption continue to accumulate, or are we suspending charge for water? And I don't believe that's the intent of the council right now, just to defer payment such that we can get a better idea of, you know, what this crisis is really like. And then, but at this point, I don't know that there was direction to stop charging, just stop billing. Without penalty, without penalty.
Understanding is, yeah, defer, defer payment without penalty was my.
Defer payment without penalty, okay.
I mean, it'll all have to be paid sooner or later. So everybody that is looking, is thinking that they're, will get out, get out without paying their water bill, that isn't what we're looking at. You know, we're just trying to help it, people who are not receiving paychecks regularly. So be careful on how big you let your water bill get. It's gonna be tough to make up the difference there.
And that's right, Honorable Mayor, and that is consistent with the governor's order. He is encouraging utility companies to, you know, make flexible payment policies, but it's not a waiver of charges.
Correct. I mean, that'll get you in a lot of trouble, so please beware. I know a lot of people that said, oh, we defer this for a month, two months, then three months, then they find that they can't, can't ever pay it back. So that would really be causing more problems for yourself. Any other questions from council? Brown, please.
Our 30-day ordinance on stays in motels, wonder if we should put a moratorium on that for 60 days? Because some people are stuck here. They can't travel back to their.
Correct. I would go a thumbs up on that.
Be a thumbs up on that, too.
Yeah, yeah. Swift, do you have any questions about Brown's?
Could he say that again?
A 60-day moratorium on the 30-day ordinance on motel stays.
Oh, 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 I thought you were asking about hotels and hotels not charging, but yes, allowing people to stay longer. I agree with that.
That'll come back.
That'll come back. We'll be back on the thing.
I mean, there's gonna be a lot of things that come up that we're gonna be thinking about tonight everywhere. I should have asked this question and that question, but staff, I know, will be working on this, and if staff has any other questions or any other thoughts, what will help the city, please bring those back to the council at our next meeting and just add those in. I'm sure the city manager will do that. He's done that before. He can think of a lot of things tonight. I think when he takes a shower, he dreams up things. So we'll see if we can come up with whatever it takes to help our residents. Okay, no other questions? I'm gonna move on to Item 2, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody wishing to speak? Do we need to ask out there in the audience if anybody else wants to speak or has anything to say?
No, I think we're okay.
We're okay, okay. Item 2, adopt a resolution recommending that the existence of the local emergency regarding the virus 19 in the city of Buena Park and authorize the city manager to request the state and federal assistance if necessary. And we have another staff report by our city manager, Jim Vanderpoel.
Honorable Mayor, I'll take this one if it may. So as the public and the council is aware, the governor of the state of California, Gavin Newsom, declared a statewide state of emergency earlier this week. What those declarations do is they allow, much like President Trump did as well earlier this week, it allows the government entity that declares the emergency within their jurisdiction access to resources, powers, some truncated procedures that otherwise it would not have. This meeting is a good example of one of those emergency procedures. This would also formalize implementation of the city's EOC plan, and it also would trigger the obligation of the state and federal government to reimburse the city for expenses that it incurred responding to incidents to protect health and safety. This also gives liability protections to public safety officers and other staff that is involved in response efforts. It is appropriate to adopt a local emergency in this circumstance. In fact, the statute specifically references an epidemic. Here we have a pandemic, so it's even greater scale. So staff does recommend that the council adopt a resolution proclaiming the existence of a local emergency within the city of Buena Park. If the city council takes this action, and of course, the city manager will provide regular updates to the council on actions taken pursuant to this authority, and the council must revisit this declaration every 60 days and terminate it once the emergency condition is over. I'm happy to take questions.
Move the recommended action.
I should mention that other cities throughout the state are taking this action. Several in Orange County have as well.
And I'd like to just advise the council that there is a revision to the resolution. Section B, it says the aforementioned conditions commenced on or about the 4th day of March. We'd like to change that to the 13th day of March, which is the first, the day that the president declared the state of emergency.
Move with that change.
And I second it.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Swift?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Trout?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
And if anything comes up with the council or whatever, we find something that we need to do, I will not hesitate to call another special meeting to inform the public. And it will, actually, then it would be called an emergency meeting, and we will address any matter that comes to the city to keep the city of Buena Park a better place to live.
And certainly, that would be televised live to the community, should you call that emergency meeting. And in the meantime, our next meeting that we would normally stream live would be a week from today, Tuesday, March 25th.
Okay, then I really think too, that our staff needs to have more people on the computer watching that, because it's being basically on Facebook too, that we can put more questions and answers together for them. Basically, I think we'll have more of an audience that if they find out that they can ask some questions, they'll be tuning in more. And so I think we need to address the, that the fact that we are gonna have a bigger audience out there.
And it's March 24th, March 24th, not the 24th. Tuesday, March 24th, 5 o'clock.
And if I may add briefly, Honorable Mayor, I'd encourage the public, as the city manager referenced earlier, to continually monitor the website for announcements of emergency meetings, as we called this one, the Brown Act allows you to call emergency meeting with as little as one hour notice.
Correct.
With just telephone calls to the newspaper and radio stations. So the public should not rely on standard noticing practices, but checking regularly with the city.
Right, because as it sits right now, any questions or answers, we, the council has been directing to the city manager or to Lance, which is our spokesman for any type of emergency. City manager, do you have anything who they should direct, call it into yourself or to Lance on any particular item?
Those would be the numbers to call.
Okay.
The folks to call.
Okay.
I'd refer them to the website, first and foremost, the county website, and really not so much our city website, our social media.
Yes.
That's where you're gonna get the most information the quickest way possible.
I mean, this is all new to all of us, so I mean, we're basically doing the best we can, and we're trying to get as educated as fast as we can on this, so we can move forward.
Yep.
Okay, see, any other questions from council? Okay, any other from staff?
No, sir.
This meeting's adjourned.